We'll call the meeting to order. All members accounted for this evening. If we could just please stand, face the flag. Say our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, we have somewhat a long agenda this evening, so in keeping with that, we'll add three more items. Under M, the resolution of the sale of the Westito Building. Now, I think that we have to go through a process, which we've just jumped a couple of steps. We have to first resolute, resolve whatever the issue is, so we'll deal with that. N is the approval of the mobility leave for Ann Manosmon. And O is an approval of a calendar change. We can get into the dates at that time. But M, N, and O are added. Does anyone else have any additions, subtractions? Okay. With those changes, I would look for a motion to approve the amended agenda.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Kurt.
I'll second.
Second by Rob. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. Next item is approval of minutes from the 4/27/2015 meeting. You've had a chance to look those over, if not, just take a bit and look them over. For a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Beth, Rob.
That's Josh. Rob will second.
Rob will second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. Schedule presenters. Beth, I'll let you carry the ball in, yeah?
Sure. Just like we had last time, we had school perceptions come in and talk about some of their survey and referendum, kind of planning things. I have a good friend here, Don Lipto. I've known him for pretty much my entire superintendency, and he is part of Springstead, which I know you've all heard of. So, we're going to invite him up, and he's going to give a presentation on the survey program that his company has.
Thank you very much. I'm going to talk fast and skip some of the slides, so we can get you from A to M, or whatever it was, O, for that time. My name is Don Lipto, and I work with the Public Education Group at Springstead. And we're going to talk a little bit about referendum planning as we work with our clients in that particular area, and then more specifically, the survey work that we do. This first slide, Why Springstead, talks just a little bit about our history, our clients, the work we've done in that area. We do have a broad array of support services for referendum planning that our clients can access as they need. They're all offered a la carte, but it is a very broad range of help available, depending, again, on the needs of the district. The consultants that we work with have many years of experience in this area, decades, in fact, if you can't tell from my gray hair. And it's an area of specialty within our firm, and we've had really good success, as indicated in that fourth bullet, with two-thirds of our clients passing one or more ballot question over time. Specifically, as it relates to surveys, we've done about 500 in the last 15 years, most of them in Minnesota and Midwest, others around the country. This slide talks about the areas that are most frequently cited as being related to success or failure of referenda, things that affect the outcome of the elections. I won't read these to you, I'll let you just kind of scan them as I'm talking, but there are hundreds of studies available that talk about these six variables and the importance of these six variables in what happens when actually people cast their ballot. The one that relates most to the survey work that we do is the last one, which is alignment between what the community's priorities are, how much they're willing to invest in the public schools, and the what of what the school board ultimately decides to put on the ballot, and the cost of whatever that proposal is. When that alignment is right, there's a much higher percentage of successful elections than when it's not right. And so, we really concentrate very much so on our surveys in that regard. As you look at this list, it talks about some of the reasons that school districts choose to do surveys. It's not just for referendum planning, although a lot of our work is in that area. I just did a survey in a suburb of Des Moines, and they don't have any referendum on their things-to-do list, and they don't anticipate having one anytime soon. So, they're checking on customer satisfaction, they're using it to get information about their strategic plan, lots of other things that have nothing to do with your referenda. You'll see some of the other items on this list relate specifically to planning for either an operating bond or capital project levy. And again, that last bullet is talking about that alignment, which I cannot say too often in terms of emphasizing how important that is. All surveys that are scientific random sample surveys have an error of measurement. And so, whether you're listening to the results of a survey on NPR, or Fox News, or any other media outlook, they're always going to be talking about that the error of measurement is plus and minus something. And in your particular case, as noted at the bottom, based on Cannon Falls size, if we were to do a project here, we would do 300 completed interviews, and that would give you an error of measurement of plus and minus 5 percent, or five and a half, to be technically correct. What that means is that if 50 percent of the people say the sky is blue, you can be 95 percent certain that the opinion of everybody in Cannon Falls is between about 45 and 55. That's that error of measurement, or sometimes called the confidence band. 300 is a very substantial interview for Cannon Falls. You could be listening to media coverage of a statewide interview, and it might be 800 people for the whole state of Minnesota. So, that's a good, solid sample, if you happen to go in that direction. The studies that we do typically take about 10 to 14 minutes on the phone. If you contract for 300 interviews, you get 300 interviews, so the onus is on us to keep calling until we, in fact, get the sample that we survey get. As you might imagine in your own busy lives, the more likelier it is to say, "I don't have time to finish this," and people check out and don't finish the interview. Random calls are controlled for demography. This is one characteristic of our survey model that would differentiate it from any other survey model that you would be talking to, at least in Minnesota. And these next few slides demonstrate what that means. These are real slides from a real client, they're not Cannon Falls, but as you look at these slides, the blue bars represent the characteristics of the entire community. So, right here, we're looking at parent, non-parent. So, this particular client had about 80 percent of all registered voters were not K-12 parents. And the red represents who we interviewed when we got on the phone and did our 300 calls. So, as you can see in this particular case, the blue bars and the red bars are almost identical, which tells you we successfully controlled for, in this case, parent status. I looked at some samples of surveys that were done by a competitor in Wisconsin recently, and they had as high as 57 percent of the interviews were done with parents. Well, if you have 80 percent of your voters aren't parents, and you do 57 percent of your interviews with parents, you're going to get a false positive, and it causes school boards to overreach. So, we're careful that we do not do that. This is the same control based on gender, and remember, the blue represents everybody in Cannon Falls. If this were you, how many, what percent are males versus what percent are females? The red represents who we interviewed. Same information by age, so as you can see, in this particular case with this client, we talked to a wide range of ages, didn't inadvertently talk to only older people or younger, a nice cross-section. And this is the control we do by geography, so we just don't inadvertently end up talking to people just on the north side or in a particular area of the district. The slides you've seen right here, again, all differentiate our product from our competitors. We do a thorough study of your demographics first, then when we do the interviews and we do the random calls, we're controlling to make sure that at the end of the day, the sample we get for you is a mirror image of everybody, and we think that's a more reliable sample. This is the same thing by past voting behavior. Five to five means that most people came and voted in every election in the district, no matter if it was dog catcher, school board, city, state, presidential, they always got there. On the other side are people who didn't vote at all, and then everything else in between, looking at the last five elections. When we do a feasibility study for school districts, if it's considering and operating technology or bond referendum, we use what's called the three benchmark test. Very quickly, what that is, is very early in the interview, there's a general question where you kind of say what you're thinking about without a lot of specificity, and you say, "Tell me what you think about that." Then, after getting that initial response, you provide additional information, then you come back and say, "Let me ask you again, based on what you've heard, tell me what you think." And then finally, you test tax tolerance. So, this is what it would look like if it was actually Cannon Falls. The district is considering putting a referendum on the ballot in the fall, it would increase property taxes to fund core teaching and learning mission of the district. What do you think about that? And so, in this particular case, this is what that first benchmark might look like, with about 49 percent saying, "Yeah, I could support that," and you can see the undecided and the opposition. Now, we're coming back and saying, "I'm going to give you more information about this. For each of the things I tell you, tell me if that would make you more or less likely to be supportive." These are not the exact wording that you're seeing, they're abbreviations, but question 16 talked about, if we don't have additional resources, we're going to have to reduce the number of math and reading teachers. And in this particular case, that made 58 percent of the people we interviewed more likely supported if they knew that's how the money was going to be used. About 16 percent said, "No, that would make me actually less likely." So, the bigger the blue bar, the more positively that particular piece of information, data, resonated with people in terms of how they responded. So, we've gone through a series of questions like that. For each of these, again, the question is, if you knew the money was going to be used to, for a particular purpose, would that make you more or less likely to be supportive? And now, we're coming back for our second benchmark. Now that I've given you a little more information about this proposal, tell me again, what do you think? And so, what you're seeing here in that lighter green bar is how people responded after information. And in this particular case, that's about, what, 5.3 percent? So, that's right at that five and a half percent error of measurement, so it may or may not be a real change, but at least it's moving north, which of course is what you want to have happen. On tax rates, we typically test anywhere from three to four tax rates, and in this particular case, you're seeing $55 up to $125. When these are actually tested in the interview, they're done in random order. So, if I were to call your house, I might, you might hear the $80 first and react to that, yes or no, then you might hear the $125, then you might hear the $55, and then last you might hear the $100. Someone else would hear the $100 first, then the highest number, maybe then the low. We do that to avoid what researchers would call lathering effect, where as the person did the interview, and I can sense you're taking me up the ladder, or you're taking me down the ladder, and that can skew or affect how I respond, and you don't get as reliable results in that way. And so, this is how this particular district responded to the question. And as you can see, if they think, if they're thinking about something on the ballot at $125 in the average-priced home, they're going to have significant difficulty. But they can be looking, you know, at something in the 80 to 100 range, and that's probably going to work in terms of the tax tolerance. We also take a look at how people responded based on their likelihood to actually vote. This is kind of a busy chart, but basically what you're seeing here is the green bar are people who hardly ever vote in any election of any kind, and the blue bar is the people who always vote. And so, sometimes we see really big discrepancies. If your wildest support is coming from the people least likely to get there, that's a reason for some caution in terms of what you put on the ballot. And the pie chart up on the right is just showing you, in your whole community, how big are each of those pieces within your registered voter group. These next few slides are just looking at the first two benchmarks. How did people respond to the first general question without a lot of information? How did people respond after they got information, comparing males and females? In this particular slide, it's a very unusual finding, we usually see females somewhere between 8 and 12 percent more supportive than males on pretty much anything. This is showing you your age. Not surprisingly, your youngest group started most positively and got even more positive after they got information. It's not unusual for that middle-aged group to be lower than the group on the right, which is kind of contrary to what you might expect, but a lot of people in that middle group are worried about their 401Ks, they're worried about whether they can retire or not, if you might be helping their kids pay back college loans, they may have bounce-back kids, as I have in my house right now. So, there's lots going on in that kind of middle-aged group. This is looking at parent status. That alumni in the middle just means people like me, where I live, I used to have kids in the public school, but not anymore, as compared to people who said they've never had kids, which is over on the right. Comparing how people reacted who have been in community ed classes in the district is compared to those who haven't, and this is a typical finding of significantly more support if people get into your building, under your roof, and participate. And this is based on past voting activity, looking at how people compare who always vote as compared to people who don't have this frequent. So, the survey, the kind that we do at least, measures the base of support for a bond or operating or technology levy. That's the initial support. Then we measure support after people get information, that's called the informed benchmark. Then we measure support for a particular tax increase, to see how much people are willing to invest in their schools. And ultimately, we're helping the board and staff, we hope, make a good decision about what they put on the ballot and at what cost. And for the third time, it's that alignment concept. Where on the left, it's the purpose of the ballot question, or the what of the ballot question, and how much it costs, and how does that align with the priorities within the community, and how much they're willing to invest. Now, everything beyond this puts me over my 10 minutes, so I put it in there as a resource to you rather than going through the slides. But that's showing you other types of questions that school districts typically ask if they're going to invest in this kind of a study. And one other way to think about that in terms of that investment side of things, most of the studies that Springstead does range right around $50 to $55 per completed interview. And so, for that, we purchase your voter file, we analyze your voter file, that was all that work at the beginning when you're comparing the blue bars and the red bars in terms of getting the right composition for your study, design the questionnaire, complete the 300 interviews, prepare all of the reports, analysis, and present the results, and that's basically what our package is. Some of our school clients only do the survey to help them plan and help them decide what they're going to do. Others will use basically everything that we have to offer to help them, and everything in between, as I said, that's our a la carte. The biggest difference between what we do and what some of our competitors do is our survey process is a random sample process. Everybody has an equal chance to be called, and when you do that, you can project the results to the entire community within the error of measurement. Contrasted from that, some companies do what are called opt-in surveys. That's when you post it on your website, and if people feel like doing it, they do it, if they don't, they don't. Or you mail it out to them, if they feel like filling it out and sending it back, they send it back. The way that I characterize that with my clients and professional colleagues, that's a terrific community engagement activity, because you're involving people, you're inviting their opinions. It is not a good decision-making tool, because with an opt-in survey, and you don't have that error of measurement, you can't project it to the entire population. Or another way of thinking about it, without getting overly technical, whether you hire us or someone else to do it, you'd be better off with a 300 interview, random sample survey than you would be with an 800 opt-in survey, in terms of helping you make a good decision about what you put on the ballot. So, I'll stop there and see if you have questions on what I went to.
One tool that we, oh, sorry. One tool that we've used a lot in the past, both Superintendent Susskind and myself in the last referendum, is a projection model. Is that included in the package you sent? That would be one of the a la carte items, correct?
Projection in terms of how much revenue, how much data, how much...
Well, you know, some people want to know, what does an 850 look like? You know, what does a 950 look like?
Oh, yeah. We do that all the time.
But that's included in the number that you gave us?
That's not in the survey quote.
Okay, that's...
But it's offered as a a la carte item.
I just want to be sure I'm giving these guys the right numbers. Got it? Okay.
And everybody that does that, I mean, financial advisors do that, and then all change about the same amount to do it. Certainly, you have to have that, and many of our clients would say, "Just for planning purposes, run it at 300, 400, and 500, 200, 400, and 600." So, we do that all the time.
Okay.
It's the same cost whether you look at one scenario or 20.
Now, what is it, what have you seen in the past as to what the responsibility and the role for the district and the board would be as to educating the community on something like this? What are we looking at? How do we get that information out of this?
Well, you know, school districts do it in multiple ways. I mean, you correctly characterized it. Your role as a school board or school district is provide information. It used to be, you know, a single-fold, four-panel information sheet, and that was about it. Now, it's that plus oftentimes Facebook, plus Twitter, plus video. I mean, it's just exploded in terms of how people communicate. When we do training in this area, we talk about what's the proper role of the school district, school board, and how is that different than, you know, the vote yes for kids committee? Certainly, they have to be coordinated, but they're very distinct. MSBA has a brochure on its website that you can download that talks specifically about the roles and responsibility of the board and superintendent. It's very good, which is a really good guide in that regard.
Just to understand, earlier in the slides, you said that two-thirds of the districts you worked with had successfully passed...
Passed one or more ballot question.
So, and I guess my question is, for the other third that you didn't, were you able to identify? And I guess when you're, so I can quantify this a little bit better for me. Did you recommend that this two-thirds go for it? Did you recommend 100%, but I'll bet only two-thirds passed? Or what was that?
That's a great question, and let me give you a concrete example. A little over a year ago, we did a study similar to what I'm talking about with a suburban district in the metro area. Our study recommended that the tax impact not exceed $84 on an average-priced home. Ultimately, the school board decided to put a ballot proposal home that was $180 on an average-priced home. So, 100 more. They did not pass that referendum. So, it's one thing to do the study, it's another thing, you know, whether or not, you know, the school board chooses to accept, leave, use the data to help guide their decision-making. And that's not a criticism of that particular school board, because they made a determination that without that $184, or whatever the exact number was, they were going to pass the referendum in November and start cutting in January, and they were unwilling to do that. So, they decided to go for what they needed rather than what the data suggested was possible. Now, ironically, just to show you that this stuff is a combination of science and art, a year later, they passed one that was $260 on an average-priced home. Different situation, a different time, you know, different context. Now, one thing that that particular district did very differently is, after losing initially, the next time around, they had a pretty extensive process on budget, community involvement in budgeting, and they, their board in June passed a motion, "I move, I second that these 19 things are cut if it doesn't pass in November." They didn't do that the first time. So, the second time around, it was more urgent, people knew what was going to be lost if it didn't, you know, pass. So, we have that all the time. As I said, some school districts had us do the survey, we never talked to them again. Other districts were hand-in-hand in the district, working with them, you know, from A to Z. So, it just depends. By the way, that two-thirds I referenced and you asked about compares to between 52 and 57 percent typical passage rate over time.
What is the time sequence to this as far as the district of our size is concerned?
If you're looking at November of '15, you should start designing your survey now. Administer it in June, get your data back in July, and you've got to make a decision by August 21, if I remember right. The board has to act 74 days before election day, and I think that that's August 21. It usually takes about eight weeks from goal to having me back here and going through the data with you. And the biggest variable on how long it takes is how long it takes to develop the questionnaire, which in my experience has ranged from a week to a year, everything in between. Any other questions? Okay, thank you for your time. Good luck with your planning.
Okay, next item is the public forum. Does anyone have any questions, concerns to direct at the board? Okay. Moving on to the finance report, attachment B.
I noticed Rob explained to me this evening when he got here, when I sent this to Lori, I added a few pages that weren't necessary. So, pages 6, 7, 8, and 9 are all information that's unnecessary. So, I was supposed to go through the attachment B, the first page, that was intended to be the financial report. And what we have here is the cash flow worksheet. The remaining pages just have my projections and my spreadsheet that kind of go through planning for the next 10 or more years, but they're not really pertinent for tonight's information. So, the first page we have is attachment B, the cash flow worksheet. And this kind of thing we're at, about $2 million in the checking account. We talked at our finance committee this morning, where some banks is looking at the possibility of offering SEDARs or a sweep account where we'd be able to earn some interest... we'd be able to earn some interest off of the money in our checking account. Currently, we don't. CD rates are very low, and this would give us a little bit of opportunity to get some interest off of that. They were just kind of seeing where the interest level is because there's a cost to the bank to offer that service. It just makes sense that it would be something we would do. We would probably have to set the limit of, say, $500,000 that stays in our checking account. Everything else would be swept out into thoroughly insured accounts that are in interest, and if we were to fall below that, say, $500,000 mark, they sweep money back into our accounts so we always have the cash flow. So that may be something that comes down the line in the next six months or so for Mercy's Bank, which would be a great thing for us. Not that we'd earn a whole lot of interest off of it, but something is better than nothing. Going down the cash flow worksheet to kind of show you, I haven't got the estimates or the actual data from the Gidoo County yet for what we received for our tax payments. So I've got estimates of about $600,000 for each of the two payments, end of May, beginning of June. I also see in here that there should be some inventory money that comes as well. And that's usually the end of May, beginning of June timeframe. Through this, cash flow is stays positive. I've been in discussion with both UNESCO and others to talk about some financing for boiler and do some cash flow worksheet for that. There may be some need for us to do some short-term borrowing this summer to go ahead and replace that boiler if we don't have enough cash on hand in order to float that. So that'll be coming down the line as well, but I don't know that it's necessarily, it's just more of an FYI for you guys to be aware of. As it were to stand right now, we're probably going to be okay cash flow in the short term for that and not have to do some borrowing. But once I get the projection spreadsheet from others, I can work through it. I'll have a better idea of if we can handle that amount in the short term before we get reimbursed for the cost of that boiler. So like I said, pages six, seven, eight, nine, you can scratch those. Actually, some of the information on that is very old, and some of it's very in the future, so those are unnecessary. If there are any questions, I can do my best to answer what you have.
Anyone?
I'll make a motion.
Question by Gary.
A second.
And here the discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Old business, three or four items on here. Summary of weight room rules, hours, supervision, et cetera. Come under you.
Yeah, you know, I missed the last couple of meetings, so I'm not 100% up to date with what you guys talked about, but one question there was, it is open, the weight room is open Monday, Wednesday, Friday for the community at night from 6:30 to 8:30. John Hogan is the guy who's got the key to that, and so adults can come in and use the weight room at night as well, too. And that was the one question that came up. So usually, most often what happens is the kids come in the morning, and we have a bunch of coaches in there. A lot of our coaches are in there in the morning, and then the adults in the afternoon.
So... How does that play into the change in the weight room now?
With the...
With the change of the equipment, yeah.
You know, that was taken into consideration a little bit, mostly as for our student athletes, our coaches were, were in on that discussion and stuff like that. We did leave one or two squat racks, I think just one, for that community. You get a handful of people in there, you know, anywhere from two to 10 people at night. So the thought process when going through that whole thing was, we left one, we think is probably enough, you know, if they rotate in and stuff like that, so.
I've gotten a report from Chrissy Newman that she's got at least a dozen high school kids in rolling down there because they can't lift here.
Well, I don't know why that is.
The type of lifting.
The type of lifting.
Yeah. They're not into the Olympic anymore. They'd rather do a different type of lifting for strengthening other than Olympics, so that was her comments to me when she was wondering why. She thinks it should be free for kids that age and allow the day to go there to lift.
You know, I don't know if the training has changed, to be honest with you. A lot of the reasoning behind it was, the way it was described to me is, you kind of have the haves and the have-nots. The people who are experienced weightlifters got the platforms, and the younger kids, the seventh graders, were trying to do this in squat rack, and it was dangerous for them. You know, there's not enough for them to do it, so that was the main drive behind it. From what I understand, that's what I was explaining to you. So I think the training has always been, I mean, I know it has been, since when I was in high school, Scott's running this Olympic-style weightlifting training. I've also heard that, too, that the high school kids are going off the snap, but I'm not sure if it's going to change. You know, I don't go in there in the morning, but I'm not sure if it's going to change too much.
Jake, is there a time for utilization where, say, kids don't want to necessarily do the Olympic-style weightlifting? Are they welcome to go in there and lift after school, that sort of thing? And, or do they have to be part of a weight program to do that?
We currently don't have anything, so we have the mornings for the kids, and really the evenings is supposed to be for adults, you know, 18-plus.
Okay, so high school kids can't go in the evenings unless supervised by an adult?
Yeah, their parent or something, yeah.
Really, there needs to be a supervisor there, whether it's adults or children there.
Well, that was my next question. So would we consider qualifying?
There is someone that's got the key.
Yeah.
John Hogan.
Hogan. So if we had somebody in charge, that would be the guy at night.
But that's just for adults, correct?
Correct, yeah.
Otherwise, how do they get in there if John's not around?
They don't.
You haven't had that problem, though?
Yeah. With our past supervisor, we did have that problem. People would get upset, can I get a key? You know, we'd get questions like that, but John's consistent, he's there, so.
That has improved quite a bit since the new supervisor. He's reliable, he's there when he needs to be there, so that's been a big improvement as of late.
So do you guys see a need for other people that aren't necessarily in the weight program where they can say, hey, I just want to go and lift a little bit curls, bench, I don't want to do the Olympic lifting, I want, just so that we're not just directing it towards one program, a lifting program? You know, I mean, I'm not on the team of that, in the weight program. I just want to go and lift. Do you see those type of clients coming in, or kids coming and say, hey, you know, I can't do this anymore because we have freestanding squat racks, or, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Have we lost something, I guess, is the question that I have? And is it measurable, or is it something where it's like, you know what, we can bring some others, we can go one more rack, but it's not going to matter because they're not there?
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Have we lost something?
You know, maybe. I could see the need for that, but again, we'd have to have a supervisor for this other time. And I think, I don't know if we have that argument about losing kids. You know, I think if they go in the mornings, Scott's got them on a program. Even if, even if we had that equipment there, I don't think Scott would be like, you know, do your own curls and do your, you know, back squats and stuff like that. I think you'd have a program on cheap paper, and I don't think that's ever happened where he's just let them kind of...
It's just, it's not appropriate, and I'm just wondering, just throwing some stuff out, not having anybody in there in the afternoon for these kids to lift, just not practical because, you know, we have it in the morning versus doing something after school, this not going to work out?
You know, we could...
You'd have to have somebody in there.
Yeah, we have to have somebody in there, and I guess in, you know, after-schools where they have, you know, there's practices and stuff like that. So I don't know if we're going to get enough kids consistently to be worth it to pay somebody to be there. Or, you know, people are serious enough about it to be there every day or every other day. We could look into it, but...
It's tough, man.
Yeah. And then after-school, too, you know, the team sometimes uses, you know, I don't know, basketball and football and cross-country and track, they use the weight room, so.
Is there any way to get public feedback in the evenings as to how they feel about the changes with the adults only?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know who goes in there, what kind of lifting they're looking to do, but I guess right now, that's, it would really, I guess, affect, I know the kids have been affected to a degree, you know, measured, I don't know, but then the adults as well. If we're getting a lot, getting less...
Sure.
I don't know what we want the weight room to be for the public.
It's real, except for me, in my opinion, is at night, it's just to do the cross bench. You and I, or whoever, just go in and go bench and utilize some of the equipment they used to have there, but I'd have zero interest in going in there.
If I was powerlifting again, I wouldn't lose that weight room, right? It's really not set for powers. It is Olympic, and there is a huge difference between the two in my eyes.
I know one thing, they went to front squats instead of back squats. That's another reason why I didn't hear the squat racks, too, because, you know, he says the back squats, it's just, it's too easy to develop that habit, you know? You could have terrible form and still muscle it up, he's going to wreck his back, but with front squats, it forces that, you know, your straight back and to lift it, your legs and your back. That was some, that was some thought behind it, too.
And I totally understand that.
Yeah.
I just wonder if there's any way to quantify how many people were actually affected.
Yes.
What the depth of concern would be.
I know at one time, there was a time when, maybe a year ago, and you might have had at one time five, six in the evening, and then it kind of, I think there had to do something with someone who was running it wasn't showing up or something like that, and then the times weren't working out, and then you got less and less. But you'd have somewhere five or six, maybe sometimes more in the summer, and then it, I think it dropped off to maybe John Hogan and, you know, who's running, opening it now, maybe a couple more, and that's maybe the extent of it, from what I gather, you know? But, yeah, okay. I just wonder sometimes, and this is coming from me and just from lifting, just on the side, too, is I don't like the Olympic, or I don't like the Olympic style, I don't like the power lifting. I like to just go in and lift. I used to do it after school. It's just something, if I wasn't in a sport, I still had something that I wanted to do. It was there for me. I could go and do it on my own, I could set my own personal records or best, and it was just an accomplishment that I could do. And then when you go in the morning, I think they're more into the Olympic-style lifting then as well, because that's what it's set up to do. So you really don't have that ability, and nothing against that, if you run a great program. I just worry that we're kind of limiting these students to just Olympic-style lifting, and it's that or nothing, and I, that's just what I found coming across.
And it is. You're right. You're very, it's a very specific lift and structured system that you have to be a part of. There is no other options. That's the reality of it. That is all there is there, and I understand you were talking about maybe a curling rack or something. Well, you don't have that option, and because you don't have that option, you won't have that information, I don't think. And I think it would be used more widely with having those options. I come from, you know, probably the same kind of background as you, and I think this is, it's important to have a girls' cross-country as it is, a men's football team, and when you're limited like that, you definitely have to have that supervision and specific training personnel there compared to a supervisor, if you know what I'm talking about. Supervisor, you can do your personal best, you can do your curls, you can do your crunches, but what we're talking about, you need trained personnel there.
Right. I mean, I don't do Olympic lifts. Could I hurt myself trying them?
Yeah.
Can I power lift? Well, I can power lift. But, you know, Olympic has so much technique, and you've really got to know the technique before you can start lifting up that bar. I just wonder, you know, and this is just speculation, I know there are some benching teams that have been out there, not at our school, but they really would be able to come here and professionally bench and have a team work out because we're so limited now. So any opportunities for things like that? We've just limited a night crew. I know Charlie Ketterlich was used to power lift, huge badge press guy. If he wanted to bring five guys over to badge press and work out, they wouldn't be able to for certain. Just those types of varieties are gone.
And that has been limited, but, you know, our morning weightlifting numbers, especially in the summer, are all standard. We know what he's got numbers like we do, so I don't think we're, I don't think it's hurting our numbers by any means.
No. Like I said, nothing's changed, it's just now these inexperienced lifters are getting the same platforms and same, you know, it's going to be a lifting program.
Yeah. Scott's good at what he does. He's got all the...
I'm just wondering if you have some specific concerns that are over my head in conversation, I wonder if you could just meet with the coaches to share those and to see if there's any alternatives to that?
Yeah, maybe have a call meeting.
Sure, you can do that, absolutely.
Just get together and talk about your concerns with them. Item B, extracurricular activities and missing practice playing time.
I don't want to bet.
Yeah, I think all of these can be removed, except D was the only one that was still kind of out there, was the logo.
Yeah, I'd like to talk about that. So I've been meeting with Mr. Hodges. We met about two Fridays ago, and we are in agreement that the board was talking about a potential crest. They wanted a crest for the logo, and we plan to keep that, but right now, we are trying to get into contact with his designs. Apparently, his sister has it, and she needs to bring it into school. And then, once we do that, then we'll talk some more, and I will put in the time, I'll come in for summer if, I will do this as long as it takes to get this done, so.
Ryan said that, you know.
But we handed that off to him in March.
It was in your year.
And you're here next year.
Yeah, I'll make sure this is done.
We're just working toward a resolution. If it takes some time, we understand.
But you are recording, you know.
Do you want us, Matt, do you want us to leave that under old business, or would you like us to just, why don't you update us, you know, when you get to your soon report? Is that okay, or do you want us to leave it in old business?
Uh, you can leave it in old business.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, under new business, we have some consent agenda items here. We can deal with these on a singular basis.
Where's the updated?
Or we can just approve them all with one action.
There's one that I want to point out here. I think everyone in this room knows who Allison Godfrey is. 16 years she's put in with this district, and I just really want to publicly for everyone thank her for her service and time, and I don't think words express kind of how all of us felt when we got this letter of resignation, but this is a great opportunity for her and her family and to be with her grandkids a little bit more on Friday afternoons, and so she's going to be staying here in town, she'll still be working here, but we will no longer have Allison Godfrey working for us, so I just wanted to mention that. Thank you, Allison.
Tough loss, I think.
Yeah.
I voted to pull that one out and vote in a H.
I tried bribing her, it didn't work.
Okay, you see the list in front of you. Go ahead, your motion.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Kurt.
A second.
Second by Josh. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Approval of the expenditures, attachment E. Get a chance to review, if not, take a moment, take a look.
That is correct, just one page, the short month, but the quicker meeting only has the one, the end of April, tell this one. So one page there is correct. So if you have any questions, I can do my best to answer them.
44391. I know you've told me for the last five years, I'll just make it six.
Do you love them?
That's funded or mostly funded?
Not by us.
Right.
Either a foundation donation or payments from students, and there's some other people in business who cater and that kind of stuff that help pay for that.
Okay. I think I only got to ask it one more time.
That's okay.
Put it out there. Jerry, this is fun.
Yeah, round with the machines.
Rob, we're almost done.
We have it.
$17,000 on utilities, that seems high for a month. No?
No, not at all. Low.
Low?
There's...
Good. Y'all shit about that.
I'll make a motion approved.
Motion by Jerry.
A second.
Rob, did you second?
I did.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Consideration to approve the resolution for Phase One of the boilers, attachment F.
Yeah, we're kind of at that step. We've got Perry here, he's back there, raise your hand. He's with UNESCO. The facilities committee has met extensively, many, many times. Dave and I have also met with UNESCO, kind of going over some of these phases, so I guess if there's any questions on the resolution, I'll turn it over to Perry or Dave.
Well, what I can do is kind of in a nutshell, tell you about the Phase One that we'd like the board to consider to move ahead on. After working side-by-side with UNESCO since the last time the board has met, the decision is to be able to demolish, and I'm just going to make this easy, the orange boiler and get rid of that. Now, that's the boiler that currently doesn't work anyways. It is down anyways. We've been using boiler number one all year. What we'd like to do for many reasons, which we can get into, is demolish that boiler and install hot water boilers, and then use the number one boiler again next year. Now, I know what you're saying, number one boiler, the boiler that we were limping along with, but the biggest point we have to make is installing new hot water boilers will eliminate about 30% of the load, if I'm correct. That's correct. By running hot water to the rest of the building instead of steam to the entire building. That reduction on load is going to help that boiler quite a bit. And of course, we need to through that boiler and make sure it's good to go for the entire next year. And another big part of that is time. These are something that, you know, we're running low on time here, we're into summer. We don't want to wait till August, you know, when we're getting things in. So a big part of this is being able to move quickly and efficiently to be able to get us up and running, and know that we're in good shape for all of next winter, because we all know we're going to have ninety-plus inches, and it's going to be cold. Probably guaranteed, because, yeah, I'll be moving stuff.
So the majority of our building is hot water with a percentage of it still steam?
Well, it's all runoff steam, but it's, some of it, about thirty percent of it, is converted over to hot water, and that would be mostly your new addition area. But it runs originally off of steam. And with the way that we ran last year, in all honesty, we just made it up the top of that hill. Taking this thirty percent load off of that boiler is going to make a significant difference, to be able to perform and maintain heat, you know, through the rest of the building. Now, of course, we could, you know, we're still not going to be changing our rooftop units and things like that, so, you know, there's still things that we're going to need to do in Phase Two, but we have quite a bit more information that we need UNESCO to get together before we get to that state. But really, we're really running low on time to be able to move forward with Phase One, and at least get those hot water boilers in place, to really set us up for getting through next winter.
Perry, maybe you could allude to the no cost to Phase One. You know, there's Phase One, Two, and Three, and we'll need to make those decisions down the road. But as far as Phase One, I know you've said it a million times, but would you mind recapping it for the people that aren't on the facility?
You know, so we've done some preliminary design, preliminary engineering, we met with a number of different boiler contractors to get some estimates. And what you see in there, there's an estimate for about three hundred and ninety-three thousand. That includes decommissioning that old boiler, cutting it up, we've got to enlarge the door because we're going to solve two hot water modular boilers. It, there's a couple other things that we're going to do to tweak the existing steam boiler to make sure that that does last through the winter. The idea would be, is that we would either use existing funds that might be available, or we'll do some short-term borrowing, short-term being probably, you know, three, four, five months. Because by the time we're done with the boiler installation, which should be August, September, we're going to have subsequent meetings with the facility committee and the board, because where we're at right now in that book that you have in front of you, we're at about what we call a thirty percent report. So we feel we're about thirty percent done with our assessment, thirty percent done with some preliminary design and engineering. We're going to be back first week of June to be at the sixty percent report. And each time we present these reports, what we're trying to do is hone down the potential scope of work you might want to see accomplished. They talked about those rooftop units replacing molds, or replacing at least the steam coils with hot water coils. So as we're going through this process, we're coming back with a lot of different options for you to consider. And so, we're going to be back in June with a sixty percent report, and then we're going to be back either late June or early July with what we consider a ninety percent report. And that's one we're going to be sharing with you, and you'll have this information ahead of time as well, but we're leading you down to making a decision as to what we should do with the remaining steam in the boiler, with the remaining steam boiler, but the also steam heating system, and should that be converted to hot water. And you'll, again, have some different options on that. And so the idea is that we're going to fund this three hundred and ninety-three thousand, either with funds that are existing in the checkbook, or we'll do some short-term borrowing. And then that cost will be rolled into, let's say you do some short-term borrowing, we'll pay that note off, and that cost will be rolled into a bigger project, that you'll then go out and get some, you know, capital facility bonds, alternate facility bonds. It'll become part of a much larger package that you go out and get permanent financing. Permanent financing being, you know, whether we can, fifteen, twenty years. So it's a short-term buy, we're going to repay that three hundred and ninety-three thousand, and then finance that as part of the bigger project later on. Does that help?
It does.
Jerry, you and Rob are on the facility, you've gone through this all. Recommendations here or opinions?
The nice thing, talking about the Phase One and getting rid of the old boiler that doesn't work anyway, and putting in two steam boilers, we eliminate, I'm sorry, hot water. We eliminate steam converting to hot water, so we eliminate the conversion. And it also, with the hot water, will give us redundancy. So if we lose one of the hot water boilers, we'll be able to pick up with the other boiler, so we won't be in jeopardy of losing total heat in the complete facility this winter. The orange boiler, as it sits, is just an anchor. It serves zero purpose for the district, and there's little chance that number one's going to make it through another winter if it's worse than the one last year. That's the reality of it.
Rob?
Go ahead.
I would say I was probably the most ignorant in the crew, which is good, because I got to look at it from a different perspective. From an uneducated facilities guy, Jerry's in the field, everybody else has been in the field. With the amount of time we have, the amount of dollars we're looking at, this is probably the cleanest way to proceed without spending a ton of money. And I know three hundred and ninety-three is nothing to sneeze at, but the total figure, if we're to refit this entire building with hot water, or to do steam again, would be a lot more. And in a short period of time, we would have to retrofit if we stayed with steam. So we need to make a quick decision. And this is probably the cheapest, quickest, and easiest that won't cause us to redo something a year or two down the road. This will get us through one year, and then this gives us, through this summer, for the full evaluation to come through, so that this next fall and winter, we'll have the whole scope and the whole picture. So this was just a little blimp on it, but all the things that we had looked at, we're talking some serious dollars, and it's one of those, where do you start? And once you start here, you can't stop till you get to the end. And when Dave brought this idea up, what I liked was, it was kind of isolated. Thirty percent of the load is gone, it sits on its own, kind of, it's not, well, you got the rooftops, you got to get rid of all the steam chaps, you got to convert everything over to hot water. You started one, and now you're talking seven figures. So that's what I liked about this.
This is a very small piece of the puzzle.
It is.
But it needs to be done, moving forward. And we have to, well, I can afford to do it in phases.
But it puts us on the path to a permanent solution.
Right. Which is the important thing. I mean, if we start going in this route, which is where we want to go, in my opinion, this is a permanent solution, this isn't a band-aid. And this is, you know, state-of-the-art, top-of-the-line, small footprint, not taking up, you know, building something the size of a small house in there, again. This is a permanent solution to start controlling the building more uniform, I guess is the best way to put it. So I definitely think it's the right direction.
Even if, if you talk about going to stay with steam, and why don't we just get one big steam boiler to control the whole building, the cost not only associated with a new steam boiler, but the cost to install a new steam boiler, it would be structural, or there's just no good way of getting that piece of equipment in this building, it's just not even feasible. And that would be absolutely the wrong direction, in my opinion, that we'd want to go. The direction we want to go is hot water.
That's the only, I guess, permanent question for the board today, is steam or hot water? If the board doesn't want to go with hot water, then we would scrap this whole idea. But if the board says, you know, we really do want to go to hot water for our future heating system, then this is the path to take, I think. So really, when you make this decision tonight, it's a steam or hot water, because once we start on the hot water path, we're not going back to steam.
And we want to, in my opinion, we want to go to hot water. More efficient.
The efficiencies start right away, I mean, so that's an important part of it, too.
So you'll be putting in two boilers down there, and initial will be taking thirty percent of load off, boil the steam, and that'll be basically running the newer part of the school.
Correct.
And then the other boilers will be there for the upgrade with everything else eventually, is that?
No, that will eventually be gone also in our ultimate plan as we go ahead.
We eventually have more boilers down there.
So eventually we have four.
Once you have four boilers, and I'll take them on, from the end of the table to me, long space, and it's only going to be bought this way.
Yeah.
Put a class down. Yeah, but, I mean, that's kind of the small piece, and you got to go with your rooftops, you're going to put, you know, it's like, um...
Unions get to have steam.
You can add a plantation, you know, and all the things that need to go along with it, but this is...
This is just one small piece of the puzzle.
If we brought the whole thing in, which I did show you, I think you'd get scared of some of the numbers.
Well, and time is a big factor here. I mean, the bottom line is, is when we go ahead with this, if we go ahead with this route, we now buy the time to plan, to have a better plan in place, and we can start that second phase as soon as our cold weather ends next year. School doesn't even have to be out, it's going to give us a longer construction time to enable us to make sure we're hitting our deadlines, and, you know, we're not making any delays, and it just buys us more time. It's just the smartest way to go about this, in my opinion.
Where do we get bids on boilers and stuff, who, how do we decide?
That's our job to do. So we have a preliminary design, again, we've had some contractors out, so we just have to finalize those designs, bid them out. Now, these are pretty commercially available units, so they're not custom-made. So, you know, we do have time, time is a little bit of the essence, but, you know, we don't want to be worried about the boilers come October, and we want to solve in August, September, make sure they're running well, so.
We could have used a little heat today, to be honest.
I guess on your question, you know, kind of like the Verlin thing, these are our engineers, they've created the specs, so they're going to be the ones that go out and get three completely different independent bids to get this taken care of. Whereas before, we kind of did the all-in-one, we are doing this the way it should be done.
Okay. You know, you've done long-term diligence on this, I appreciate the work you've done on this. Dave is one, so I know you, it hasn't just popped overnight on. I would look for a motion to consider the approval of the Phase One of the boilers.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Kurt. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Brenda. And we'll have a roll call on this.
Okay. This is resolution approving the implementation of Phase One of the high school boiler replacement. Cannon Falls is ISD 252's Board of Education does hereby certify that the following is a true, complete, and correct copy of a resolution adopted at a meeting of Cannon Falls ISD 252, Board of Education, duly and properly called and held on the eighteenth day of May, 2014.
Whoop, we need to change that to fifteen.
Fifteen. Twenty fifteen. That a quorum was present at said meeting, that a majority of those present voted for the resolution, and that said resolution was set forth in the minutes of said meeting. Rob?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Bob?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
Okay, that passes by a six-zero vote.
Thank you, Terry.
Little smile there, huh? Phase One for you. Okay, item D, consideration to hire an elementary PE date teacher effective fifteen, sixteen school year.
Elementary?
Sure. Molly Benrue, she's a somewhat vocal resident from around here, southeast Minnesota. She's just graduating from U of M, and she has a previous degree as well, so we're excited to bring her on. She's got the date on the side of things, she's already been in, and kind of seen what the job is like, hasn't backed out, so I think she's here, so, very excited to have her.
She came up the day that she came, she was here with Sue Brimraldi, just excited and giddy, and she even likes Mr. Bell, so...
Oh, wow.
She thinks he's great.
What's for date, what is the acronym, what's that stand for?
It's Physical Adapted Fire.
Okay.
Benrue, got to be very local.
Yes.
The other side of the county, huh?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll suck it, she likes.
Motion by Brenda, seconded by Jerry, further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, Carrie. Consideration to hire a third-grade teacher, one-year contract, fifteen, sixteen school year.
So, you know, there's two of them, you know, we'll go with this one as Ariana Sorensen, coming to us from, let's see, St. Michael, I believe, and extremely excited. I mean, just, you know, excited, they're going to hopefully move to the area, she thinks. So, you know, the third-grade team is excited to welcome her as well, so, should be good.
Motion to approve.
I'll make a motion.
Jerry?
I'll second.
Who second?
Rob? I'll second.
Thank you. Rob is second, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, Carrie. Consideration to hire a third-grade teacher, similar to E.
Yep, so actually, this one's Margaret Hoffman, and she actually was a student teacher in our building last year. So, and actually, she taught in the third grade. So, again, fantastic fit, very excited, so.
Derek, would you take a quick second and just explain to the board why you opted on two one-years?
Yeah, you know, really, it began as the kindergarten position and the third-grade position, but really, it's, it just makes it easy to have one-year positions in all three of those new grade levels positions for purposes of, if those one-year leaves that you approved earlier this year, if they have to come back next year, it makes the decision a little bit easier, actually. Rather than deciding now, I'll have an opportunity to see how the first year goes, and then make a decision at that point, rather than do it now, without as much background with these people, so. Just a little flexible, I guess.
Thank you. Motion?
I'll make a motion.
Josh? Rob, second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, Carrie. Consideration to approve the list of Ed Foundation board members. Because we never used to do this the last couple of times.
This is procedural, yep.
Last couple of times we have, and I hope it is procedural. These people have stepped forward, and we know how much effort gets put in by the foundation, so thank you to those.
I'll make a motion.
Go ahead, Brenda.
I'll second.
Motion by Brenda, seconded by Kurt. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, Carrie. Elimination, or consideration to approve the preliminary fifteen, sixteen budget, including CED.
Yeah, I've got now.
That's, yeah, I can't outhand out.
She knows where to give me anything.
So once you put those handouts, I'll start to walk you through. And this is, again, just the summary part, real similar to what we had approved as the fiscal year fifteen revised budget, last meeting, this is now the preliminary or initial fiscal year sixteen budget. Just to note, before we get started, that the middle section is the 2014, 15 revised budget that we just had approved at the last meeting. If revenues and expenditures hit exactly on the button as budgeted, we have an expected audit total of about eight hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars in the general fund at the end of fiscal year fifteen, going into fiscal year sixteen. So that's kind of the starting point of this. Of that eight hundred and eighty-three thousand, about two hundred and twenty-five is reserved for certain things like OPEC benefits or health and safety issues that can't be used for just anything in the general fund. So really, coming into fiscal year sixteen, you're looking at about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars undesigned general fund money. So that's kind of the background to start. So the top section is what we're looking at. What I ended up doing here is taking about two thousand lines of account codes and boiling that down into just eight funds to get the basic summary. General fund, you see the revenues and expenditures that are budgeted. We're looking at spending down the fund balance again in fiscal year sixteen, about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Much earlier in fiscal year fifteen, we had talked at the finance meeting, projecting that we might have to cut about six hundred, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the budget for fiscal year sixteen, tried to get to about four hundred thousand, that with some tightening of the belts. It's not a surprise to see that we're having to spend down the general fund again in fiscal year sixteen, other than, to me, it makes me anxious or nervous when I see we're cutting it down. But if things were hit on the button, again, you're looking at an expected audit total at the end of fiscal year sixteen of about seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars, and roughly, again, two hundred and twenty, two hundred and twenty-five thousand of that will be reserved for benefits, health and safety, and the life. So you're looking at an undesigned fund balance in the general fund of about a half a million dollars at the end of fiscal year sixteen, if everything hits, there are no big surprises. That being said, orders would like us to be at about twelve percent, which would be about that one-point-two, one-point-five million dollar level. So we're getting to a point where you're looking at having two, two-and-a-half weeks of reserve and cash versus two months. So as we talked about in the finance meeting this morning when we presented this originally, you know, referendum is something that, it really is something the district needs to consider, whatever, however it may be. whether, however it may be. Freeing up some funds in the general fund is going to be a necessity. So let's, there you see the general fund's $150,000. Kind of discussed that enough. Food service should be projected to have a fund balance of about $80,000 at the end of fiscal year 16. I talked to Wendy this morning, and she mentioned this also at the finance meeting. Food service is not in the business to make money. Now, $80,000 in their fund balance is not excessive by any means, but she does have some equipment and facility issues and needs. To be quite honest, with the $80,000, it's not going to buy the dishwasher that she needs, but I told her to maybe consider looking at some things. So that could change when we do revise budget for 16. She might be getting some equipment to help shore up some needs that she has. Community service, just look at about a fund balance of about $400,000 at the end of fiscal year 16. You'll see some spending down in that fund, partly because of salaries are made to help be more online with some teaching, but also, we had a little bit of excess fund balance. We get dinged a little bit, but all in the big picture, the community is doing quite well. Debt service is really based on what our payments schedule is set up for. And then the revenue based on that is 5% more than the full need. In our county, we do a pretty good job of paying taxes, so you'll see we'll end up building up that fund balance. And the debt service, we should have about $300,000 at the end of 16. Sometimes, we are able to do a manual adjustment and reduce that and help with the taxpayers, and that may be something we'll be able to consider, look at in the following year to do levy. Trust and Agency is a scholarship fund. A lot of those accounts are set up or receive the cash each year paid out. Some are set up in perpetuity, and they get paid down as they go. There's not a whole lot of interest to be made, so to see that decline a little bit is expected. And the final two funds are the OPEB trust. It's a million-dollar fund that we went out for about six years ago. The intent was to draw about $100,000 each year to help pay other unemployment benefits. We're on schedule to do that, and then the OPEB debt service would be the payment on that bond. Things to consider now, it didn't seem like it was that far off when we did 10 years, but now you're looking at three, four years down the road, we're going to figure again some of what we want to do for those OPEB benefits. As you go, is typically what has happened in the past, if you kind of fund another general fund, there may be some consideration at a later date to maybe go out for a bond again. But just some issues to maybe consider. All in all, took quite a bit of time. They're trying to tighten up. There's probably not built in as much wiggle room as maybe in other budgets. This is what is tight as I think I can get at this point. Again, we're throwing a rather large, dark board right now. This will be tightened up as we go, just like the revised budget for fiscal year 15 did. But it's a very good starting point for us in fiscal year 16. I think that the bigger things, rather than asking what's in the budget, are things that aren't in the budget and that are things like a bus or vehicles for the bus garage. Those are the issues that we're going to have in the future as well and to consider.
Even things like copy machines, I mean, those kinds of things we're meeting on and we're talking about, they're not built in the budget yet, so those are all things to kind of keep in mind.
Where's our, where are we relative to the SOD term?
We've got positive fund balance, so we're okay for right now. Do, you know, say what you needed to get. Say the boiler is $400,000, and we're not able to go beyond that. We don't, we have to do it all through our cash. That's going to spend down the general fund. Then you get, maybe you have to buy a bus or two, now you're spending $500,000 more, and you get to a point where we're negative in the general fund at the end of fiscal year, then they would start considering to look at SOD. We would, we'd have plenty of forethought or advance notice of that happening and be able to hopefully do some corrective actions before we get there. Can you think of another path that we're going, that's to spend in the general fund? It would be one of those things that's inevitable for your, that we're going to do something, whether to operate a referendum or reduction of expenses.
So would the boiler go in the construction area next year, or?
No.
Okay, not next year?
No, the general fund, then I'll go to debt service.
Okay, okay.
The building construction fund is more for like the addition of.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Again, I've got all the information in my office, too. If you're interested in seeing how the nuts and bolts gets all put together, I'm more than happy to sit down with you in my office and go through that as well.
What's that? Jake has a budget for community.
Jake, did you want to talk about yours at all?
No.
It's on. Okay.
You might just take it in your ears.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Jerry. Second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Josh. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Consideration to approve the mandatory O5 lunch price increase.
I was at my HBL meeting on Friday. Everyone is going up a nickel or a dime. So, just mandatory, nothing we can do about it.
Didn't we do like a double increase last year so we could avoid one?
That's why we're just doing five this time instead of 10.
Is this the last one we have to do, or is it continually raised?
Still got it. Until they tell us, we don't have to mandate an increase. I think eventually, we have to get to 260, so better stay.
They keep raising that as well. It's a federal issue.
Yep.
Thank you, federal.
I'll make a motion to approve a mandate.
Motion by Kurt.
I'll second.
Seconded by Jerry. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Consideration to approve a mobility leave for 15-16.
And this is why, I know, this is why Lori can't leave me for a week, because when I get in charge of things, we get mess-ups. Your N is not going to be a mobility leave. It is going to be approval to hire a fifth grade teacher. So you can leave mobility leave as J. I apologize. It's not Lori's fault. It's all mine.
So we'll replace N with?
A hire of a teacher.
Just a hire.
Mm-hmm.
Not just a hire.
I apologize, Lori.
Okay. Do we need to elaborate a little bit on J?
We can. It's a mobility leave. Ann Melsmann is in the back of the room. She's here. She's really excited to take an opportunity. She's going to take three years and kind of explore some different careers that I think can help her personally and professionally, for that matter. And as you can see, I'm not sure, I don't think her letter is attached, but she'd like to use her language in another setting as well. So we're really excited to offer this opportunity to Ann, and we always have the door open so that she can come back and do those staff development that we know is so important for her to maintain. So when she does come back and ready to teach and be in the classroom, that she's up to speed on that. All teachers are required to keep their licensure active, so we offer those opportunities to her at any time. So I would recommend approval on this.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Brenda? Jerry with the second. Other discussion?
So this is a three-year?
This is a three.
Or two?
She has the option at the end of each year to come back and say, you know, this isn't what I thought it was going to be. I'd like to come back in the classroom. She'll let us know by February 1. That's just about when administration's sitting down and talking about those things, so it works out real well.
Just don't forget to come back.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Okay. Consideration to approve a referendum marketing company.
Well, you've heard from, and I'll make this really quick. You've spent enough time on this. I appreciate all of you hearing me out. What I've kind of heard at the finance meeting this morning is they weren't sure if we should, if we needed one for sure, and that's still kind of the third option. You do have the school perceptions. What I do like about this one is it's very reasonable. It's almost a third of the cost of what the one you heard tonight is. It also works really well with LERS. That's the financial management system that we currently use. Because we don't go with Springsteen as our financial advisor, this survey is going to cost us. It was originally 18. He let us know late last week when he heard this proposal. They did lower it to 15,000. You heard him when I asked the question, what about that projection model and those types of things? That's not included in this. That can be upwards. Josh, would you say 1,500 typically?
Yeah.
Roughly? Okay. And so, and then you've got school perceptions that does work already with our LERS. They pull all of our information, so they're kind of a dual company. We already paid for LERS. That's why the cost on this is so much lower. Your third choice would be to go with no survey. Again, that's fine. You know, I heard, and maybe Kurt could allude to the finance meeting. I thought we had some really good discussion on the survey and where to go with that.
Yeah, it's, I guess, some people on the board or on the committee were saying, you know, if we're going to go about doing this, we should do it right, you know, and make sure that we get all the information that we need to do it. I think a lot of it, on my part, was, you know, are we, are we going to be able to educate the community well enough to proceed with this? And in order to do that, you have to have the information, just like what was it Don was saying this evening, too, you know, you got to have, got to know what you're looking for and what you're going to go out there and market for. So in general, everybody thought we should, I think, for the most part. It's just what part of that do we want? We want to do this whole survey on who we're going to be able to capture, if that's the words we want to use, or do you want to educate, you know? It's a package deal, correct? I mean, you can't really pick and choose, I don't think, per se. But, yeah, and the other thing was, it's, there's some question maybe among board members, do we do it now, or do we do it during an election year? I think the majority.
Well, the survey would still be good no when, or would you buy it?
Right.
It would work with us even if we failed this fall.
Yeah.
Tweak that survey. These two, the reason why they were presented to you is I did call all references. There's a ton of companies that do this. I talked to a lot of my colleagues, and I found two companies that I could really give to you in good conscience. So they've been prescreened. I called a lot of reference checks on this. Especially the schools that failed. I thought it was really important to see what they thought if they went against the recommendations and things like that, so.
So you bring back from the finance committee just what? Proceed?
Yes. This is my gathering. Proceed with it, and better now than later, than later years, well.
For the referendum or for the hiring of a company?
For the referendum period.
Does the hiring company get it done right?
Yes, yes.
Brenda, you have.
Oh, does school perceptions do the same kind of survey, the random sample, or the opt-in survey?
They don't do the opt-in like where it's on your online, you know, face. But when she talked about, she showed us that it is a paper sampling that went out. I get where, you know, they're in competition, you know, he's trying to allude to the fact that, you know, maybe all your yes voters mail theirs in. I found from when I talked to the people that I interviewed, that wasn't the case. They felt like they got a very good cross-section. Actually, your no voters really send them in, because they want you to know, don't even ask me, you know. But, yeah, there's a little bit of difference there. The problem I have a little bit with the calling is, I don't know how many of you in this room have a landline. It's not many. So to get that sample base, and they say they're going to get 300, well, you're really stretching it to find a group that may have a landline phone. I know we don't at our home, and a lot of homes don't. So not everyone loves to be called on their cell phone. That's kind of a private thing. So when we give that information out through our campus, you know, there's a little bit of difference between a landline and a cell phone, so something to think about, too.
A landline, but I never answered that.
Thanks, Brenda. They're calling for it.
Are we, then, Beth, just voting to approve to go out and hire a firm, or is this to decide on?
If we are going to decide to go with a survey company, I need, we need to make that decision tonight. And again, that third option is to not go with any. That's okay, too. If you opt to go for referendum this fall, there is going to be expense. We've talked about that. We would have to hire our own hiring judges. We can't hop on the city ballot, all of those things, so. But this is an investment, too. I like the idea of a survey just for that investment process. And that's what I heard at the finance meeting, too, was, you know, we're the shortest staff we've ever been. I can't do things on work time. I can't have Michael or Derek out there, you know, on work time. That's not how it works. So the survey would tell us, it may tell us, too, not to go this fall. It may be lazily clear we're not ready for that. Having a neighbor school fail a bond, you know, it might be, it might be insightful to know that our community's just not ready. It's up to you guys, whatever you want to do. I've given you the resources. Now you need to decide if you want to use them or not.
So the difference in costs is 8,500 versus 15,000.
15, so 8,500 versus 15.
Now, the first one, and I forget, because I forget over again. Same type of information about what would the public support as far as dollar-wise?
We can draft it however we want. You'll have a lot of say in what you want on there. They also really specialize in that technology. I don't oppose the idea of going out for a technology levy, freeing up some of that money on our general fund, too. So those are some things that they're really good at as well.
I know the latency effect plays in a part here, because like you said, Rob, it's hard to remember what LERS was with schools perception. They had a good presentation as to how they went about getting, gathering their data. I really liked that. And they're very specific with this gentleman here. What's, what's the, in your opinion, and from looking at other schools or schools that have done this with school perception, they've been very good as well?
Outstanding. Probably, probably the best, especially the people that failed. You know, school perception told us not to do this. They told us they would only pass it this dollar amount. You know, I kept hearing that repeatedly, so that gave me a little bit of comfort, too. Now you guys need to listen to that, but, you know, we don't know until we do it.
And school perceptions doesn't include the projection, the 8,500 dollars?
That's where we can tap into LERS.
Oh, we can use LERS.
Yep. Josh and I use, Jeff Seeley, you've met him many times, kind of together.
No extra charge for that, though.
There's some costs, but that's built into things that we already do with LERS, so the cost is quite a bit cheaper, because they already have our data. It's already in their system, so.
No, I'd rather sit down at the kitchen table and fill it out than have a phone call.
And you do it when you want to do it?
Yeah, exactly.
So you can't sleep at 1:00 AM? You're filling out a survey, you know, when you want to do it?
Exactly.
Their hit percentage was very high. That's what impressed me about that last one. I mean, they seemed to be able to call whether or not you're going to be effective and you're going to pass it or not. I don't know what the percentage was, but it was well over 90, as I recall.
Well, I think the last year was 8. They only had one that missed.
The problem, you know, they haven't done as many as Springsteen. You know, I'll defend Springsteen there. They've got a long history, you know, so sometimes those numbers can be deceiving, too. But I think school perceptions is up and coming and doing a really, really nice job.
I make a motion to hire school perceptions.
Let's have this.
Rob made a motion to hire.
Barely.
Inch, inch or a mile.
We're talking fast on that.
Their name again is.
School perceptions.
Rob's motion was to hire school perceptions to do a survey on our behalf. And that was seconded by Brenda. Any other conversation? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Okay. Item, item L is a discussion to set a date for early June for a work session with UNESCO. Do you believe we need a work session, or do we just continue with our facilities people?
Dave's not here. I, I think they really want a work session so they can explain to you what Phase Two is. I, Jerry shaking his head. It's really detailed.
It'd be overwhelming. We could never.
We went through it three hours, and I still kind of feel like I'm swimming. So I do think a work session, make it a half-an-hour work session, presentation, just to kind of go through some things, I think would be wise.
Should we coordinate that with 90% or do it before we get the 90% back? Probably the 60 would be good, because as you cover all the boiler, I think the 90s would include the envelope.
The 90s will include the envelope.
Yeah. So maybe we can get the leg going.
Is it, is it something where we would have a work session preliminarily to our regular board meeting, or can't we do that?
You can. You know, we could tie it onto that. You could have a 5:00 work session and make it just that. You sure could.
We can make it in the night, too. I'm just throwing it out there that as long as we're here. Brenda would have a. If we get it in front of our regular board in 5:00 PM.
Lori, what do you think of that idea? Kind of knock it all out together. They may be wanting that information a little sooner than June 22nd, but under the circumstances, we need to figure out financing, and that gives Josh and I some major time to work with Seeley and try to figure that out, because we will need to have that ready for them, too. So maybe that's wise to do.
It was a suggestion, and we do need to keep moving forward here judiciously, I would guess, like in our.
Is it, could we do it at the board meeting? We don't know what's on the agenda for the board meeting. Is it, is it long?
It's quite full.
To go afterwards, and.
There you go, to half.
But 5:00 o'clock would be all right.
Let's make plans for 5:00 PM on June 22. Thank you. Item N.
Okay, the resolution of Sal Rosito. Remember way back when I told you I was not a Realtor, and they don't teach us, it's in superintendent school? You need to have a resolution from your board to be able to sell the property. We're doing really well, moving forward. I think we've got the deed figured out. I've got my superintendent report. I'll save all that for then, but I do need a resolution to go ahead and sell the property, so.
What do you think eventually that Brenda will have to read?
Oh, wait a minute, I don't have a copy of it. Yep, if you could do that very first, you just need to make sure that you say the property site.
The legal description?
The legal description.
And is there anything down here that she could close with, or should she?
Lori, do you think anything other than the legal description is needed?
No, we're going off of that when it starts off with the first whereas.
You gotta read the legal description?
Read all the way down to whereas?
The start of the whereas. I get the resolution authorizing the sale of property. Oh, we need a motion?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Jerry, seconded by Kurt. Other discussion? Now.
Okay, now a vote on the resolution authorizing the sale of property. Whereas the district owns a parcel of property, the legal description of which is as follows. All that part of the northeast corner, quarter, of the northeast quarter of section twenty-seven, township one-eleven, range seventeen, Gutehude County, Minnesota, described as follows. Beginning at the northeast corner of said northeast quarter, of the northeast quarter, thence south on the east line there of eight-hundred-and-sixty-four feet, thence west at right angles to said east line, four-hundred-and-thirty-five-point-six feet, thence north, eight-hundred-and-sixty-four feet, thence due east on the north line of said northeast quarter, of the northeast quarter, four-hundred-and-thirty-five-point-six feet, to the point of beginning. And further identified by Gutehude County, a property identification number thirty-seven-point-zero-two-seven-point-zero-two-zero-zero, and with the following street address, thirty-eight-zero-ninety-five-one-hundredth Avenue, Cannon Falls, Minnesota, five-five-zero-zero-nine.
Thank you.
All right, voting Kurt?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Brenda, yes. Josh?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Passes, six-zero. Item N.
As you sign your consent agenda, we've had a resignation in fifth grade, so I'd like Derek to move ahead, and so if you could approve the hire of a fifth-grade teacher.
I'll make a motion. Motion by Jerry, second?
I will. I'll second.
Josh is second. Okay. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Calendar change is what I wrote here.
Yeah, we, we have a great opportunity. The HBL has selected us to be part of the HBL music competition. It's a really a big deal, and they need every square inch of our school. With that said, we'd already like to make a calendar change. We think it's gonna be the only one for the year. But currently, on March sixteenth, it's a PLC early-out day. We're not gonna have that day. We're gonna move it to March thirty-first, which is the competition day. Instead of a release at one, we will release at noon. We will feed all the students before they go. We're worried that, you know, a little bit, this is a Wednesday to a Thursday, but we'll do a lot of information. Derek Bell will be sure he's tweeting it out every single day. Everybody will know that this day is happening, but it is important that we do a calendar change. So March sixteenth to March thirty-first, and it'll be a noon release instead of one.
What music competition is it?
It's the HBL sections.
Smaller one.
Smaller, yep.
Derek, can you tell us your Twitter account again?
Yeah, I have that in my report, if you don't mind.
I, I have more followers than he does, I'd just like to say.
Who tweets more?
I have none.
Oh, it's tight, it's tight.
I have none. Let's move forward.
I'll make a motion to approve the calendar change.
I'll second.
Motion by Kurt, seconded by Brenda. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Okay, now we're down to reports. Board members, anyone have anything for the cause? Anything extra to report on facilities, well, with the dollar finance, what we're down with all the other? Nothing from board members?
Are we going through the committee reports, or just board members?
Let's do board members, and then we'll drop down to committees when committees come up.
And we're not bringing this out earlier than the meeting, but is it possible to get this before the meeting?
Nope, people mostly do it the day of, to be honest. They wait till the very last minute. It would be completely inaccurate to get the consent agenda ahead of time.
It's hard to make a decision on something you see for thirty seconds.
What would ever change, what would change on there?
Well, I'm just saying, it's, I mean-
No, Rob, every school board does it that way. There's nothing that can change. If they're resigning, they're resigning. There's nothing we can do about it.
If we wanna pull something out, we have no opportunity to look at it. So I'd like to look more at this, to find out more about it before we actually do something about it. Everything else we get to see at least.
But on the consent agenda, right, but we don't get that choice. If someone is resigning from our school district, something, that isn't something we have a choice on. There's nothing that can change. I would say most of them come in at four o'clock on the day of the board meeting, and that's the truth.
And it's been directed by MSBA to do it that way.
Yep, we have to-
So we're hiring somebody, too?
Private for them, yes. Their name is not schools.
It's very, very easy job to do.
It's just tough, like, if you're hiring somebody, go, oh, yeah, let's, you know, not see a list of anyone until you vote, and it's, I mean-
Again, this is where you hires to do background checks, you hires to call references, and all that, so.
But to look at thirty seconds later, vote on it, to me, is redundant.
I think just before you came on, there was a directive that we used to include it in on all the packets, and then bang, we couldn't.
Well, we used that until about two, three months ago. We would get it with the normal-
When did we change that, October?
Yeah, just this last, it was long ago.
We were getting boots for it, for wood.
Well, I don't like it.
There's a lot of people that, they'd like to keep that stuff private.
On the record.
And sometimes they change their mind, to be honest. They haven't told the board meeting to pull themselves off of that list as well.
I don't care if we do that.
We had three add-ons today.
Okay. Moving forward, anybody else for board interaction? Otherwise, we'll jump down to committees. Finance, anything to add? One of us wasn't there.
Yeah, just, we pretty much talked about everything, except maybe we're going off for second bids on healthcare premiums.
We don't know anything yet, but, yeah.
That's about it. Well, that might affect, so, that's it.
Policy, Rob?
Nope, no, it's been meeting.
Curriculum?
And Kurt?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I missed that one. That's, no, that was last week, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you missed the tech-
Yeah, I haven't since last week.
Yeah, right.
Check, committee?
We did meet last week. Initially, we talked about the venues going back. Apparently, the Dell Reckon spoke. They're not going back. They're just gonna stay at the middle s- The high school, the middle school's gonna go with a Chromebook, which will be cheaper, save us some money. But it will be a laptop that's gonna go to the middle school. So there's gonna be a little bit of a change up in our one-to-one devices for this next year, but it'll save us some money.
Close to forty thousand.
Yeah.
Is that comparable product?
Better.
In, in some ways, it'll be better. I think what I like is, the variety is going, I mean, you go from an Apple product to a laptop-type product, to a tablet-type product. So they're gonna get everything before they leave the school in their hands. And then you may go away once those leases are up, because we don't, we're not gonna lease anymore, so we'll have two grades of that. And then, as those leases expire, we'll be able to change into something better, so, which is why we like the lease.
Mike, you're shaking your head. Anything to add there?
Well, I just, that was the consent that we had going in, is we want them to have access to all the different platforms that they're trained and ready to go for twenty-four something learn, so.
Just not sure about the Windows ten coming up this summer.
Anything to add to that, Kurt, at all, or not? Nothing. Death development, Josh, you met with those folks?
Uh, they meet again tomorrow.
Okay. Transportation, Josh and Bob. Had just a real brief conversation with Andy, not in a meeting setting, but just in a, hey, Bob, just a heads up, we need five new buses. You know, it's getting to the point, like, like we ran on a few years ago, where we'd had to just spend money after money to keep these safe buses on the road. He says, I'll do whatever you want, but you need to seriously consider multiple buses here quite soon. So, just to let you know that we're spending money on the side just to keep buses on the road. Safety's not an issue, because you know DOT beats us up pretty good if we don't pass them, so our buses are passing, but at a great deal of cost to just keep them. Kind of like the old car, you have to keep sticking money into it, so that's transportation conversation. Facility?
Covered a lot of it tonight.
Covered a lot. Okay. Negotiations, haven't started on that yet. We just soon hear about the legislative things going on, but I'm not sure they're a hundred percent sure. CE Committee at Foundation, any of the other committees? Soup report?
Yeah, I'll pass mine out. It's got that sheet there with you, too. Pass those down. Pass those down. Basically, the Cito update, there was a lot of problems with the deed. That has consumed a lot of time. It originally goes back to nineteen fifty-three. We do have that cleared up. The buyer, however, was a consolidated school district, number six. I have learned so much about how this works. When you've got a title and a deed in a district that does, doesn't exist anymore, it takes a lot of work at the courthouse to get that switched. We're working on the certification, verification from the Minnesota Department of Education, showing that we are a school district of two-five-two. Originally, they were two-five-nine, and before that, they were just number six. The stuff we need has been recorded and moving forward, so I think we're okay. We have a purchase agreement on the table. I have been running some of these things by Rob, obviously because of his profession. We had a good offer on the table. I believe it's a good offer. We did go ahead and counter. They were asking for us to have the tank removed out there, and if you remember correctly, it holds eight thousand gallons, and it was about eighty-six hundred dollars to get it removed. We've had the soil tested. The test came back fine. So our counter was, you're buying it as-is. You know it's as-is, means we're not removing the tank. They were talking to the buyers today. It sounded like that was gonna be a go. It also helped that our appraisal up there was much higher. They, they came in very low. So I think our counter is fair, you know, we're, we're countering eighty-six hundred dollars, basically. I put some details in there. I passed out my college options results. This came in today. Quite interesting. Here's a colored copy if you want it. I thought it's interesting, because it, it surveys our parents, and it also surveys our community and where our kids lay. And I just thought there's some really good information on here. We're well above the national average, for example, in medical. Our district, of the kids that went to college, thirty-nine percent of them went into the medical field. The state average is twenty-nine, and the national average is also twenty-nine. So, things like this, it was just more of a, kind of an interesting thing that came down. I did want to point out that we are continuing to make reductions without bringing them to the board. One of them, if you aren't aware, payroll, Kathy Home, had tried to retire. I said, no, you can't. We need you. And she said, but I can, and I said, no. And she did, we met in the middle. She currently comes once a week. She's gonna do it twice a month, and we think we can get payroll on that. So it's quite a bit of savings, close to eight thousand dollars. We are not going to replace the outgoing secretary. That's close to thirty thousand. And we did have a lunchroom person that Wendy is gonna work without, mainly because ALC doesn't need anything, Cito isn't gonna need that catering, and that kind of thing. So ultimately, that was a really easy savings for us to do. So, I just wanted you to know, we are continuing to make reductions and trying to get to that four-hundred goal without impacting learning, and we, we think that's the case. Bob already kind of talked about the legislative update a little bit. Obviously, if you've watched the news at all, if you're following Twitter, in any way, shape, or form, you're seeing the governor. Sticking point is still that universal preschool for four-year-olds. The Senate and the House are both saying, you know, we're, we wanna put money on the formula. It looks like two and two. We'll see where things go. As of, right before we came in this meeting, the House and Senate did agree to three percent annual increases on the formula, making it one-point-five, one-point-five. But if he does, if he vetoes it because of the all-day, everyday, half-day preschool, I don't know where it's gonna land, so you know what I know.
Do you know why he's so hung up on that?
You know, we had a really great meeting with the commissioner, and I think the big thing that all the superintendents said is, you never even asked us. We don't know if we have room for it. We won't have teachers for it. You just gave us all-day, everyday kindergarten. I think he generally believes, you know, it will help, and I think there's a lot of good things about getting kids in early literacy programs especially. But ultimately, it comes down to, we have a great program. Our, we don't turn any kids away. If they wanna come here, they get a scholarship already. So ultimately, all this money, one-hundred-seventy-three million dollars, is going to schools that don't have those programs. And I think that's what's really frustrating, is that, again, the rural schools that are providing these services, we've got a great program. We're actually a five-star parent-aware program, and so we kind of get hurt, because we're not getting money on the formula, but we've already got a program in place.
I mean, I just don't understand. You have both parties that agree to the educational piece, and then you have a governor that's hung up on four-year-old preschool, no education.
We couldn't get him to answer, and the commissioner isn't answering it, because she's, it's like, she has to answer that way, so I, I don't have an answer for you.
Is there supportive research on it? Is that effective?
Oh, there's a lot of research. She has shown that it's very effective, but-
But we already have it.
Yeah. It's an economic issue, you know, like, like I said, we don't necessarily need it, and we wouldn't necessarily receive much of the funding either.
Nope. And speaking of buses, if we have eighty preschool kids coming here, we have to buy a bus. There'll be no choice, because if you're adding eighty kids in your school system, that's the size of the bus, so.
Well, how are they gonna cook the buses?
They've already changed the law on that. You don't need a seatbelt.
So can they ride with the other kids in?
No, I'm sorry.
Can they ride with the other kids in the bus then?
So, that's, that's what I got.
All right, we're in the home stretch, everyone. Operation Safety Committee, David's in here to discuss that.
You know, I would, Derek, would you mind hitting on the playground situation, just so they're aware?
Sure.
I, I think it's a big, it's a big meeting, so I think it would be fair enough someone to hit on it.
Well, you know, Dave had at least one company come out and just assess our playground situation at the elementary, and just do a safety audit, basically. A little bit alarming, I guess, you know, in, in my eyes, you know, I look at it, but I don't have the right lens of someone who, who works in it every day. It seems safe to me, but there's clearly some issues out there. Things that mostly have to do with the mulch, and somewhat, a couple areas where the, the border around it is not, the safety zone is not large enough. There's some equipment that is so old that it, it's just falling apart, literally. You know, the, the mulch is not spongy enough, so we need to dig that up and re-put in the proper mulch that meets that, that code. And there's a few other things. So right now, I think our safety committee went through, and we, we talked about what are the different options, and what are the costs that come along with either tearing out some of the equipment, and/or updating it, and just repairing it, so I don't know what, I, I don't, we haven't really decided yet on, on where we're gonna go. It's just something that we, it was good information to have. We've already had our local custodians in-house repair what we could, but there are some issues that we're gonna need to tackle, just safety-wise, because it's one of those things that now that we know, and if we don't do something, we're gonna be in trouble, whereas before, we, we could, yep. So, it's good information, though.
Thank you.
Yep.
Tech report, you received that, I think, this afternoon, to review. Principals report, we've got, I think Tim, Tim's was sent up this afternoon. Derek, anything you'd like to add to your own?
Oh, absolutely. I gotta just point out a couple things. First of all, thanks for the Twitter shout-out, yeah. One, one little caveat to that, that I wanna point out, that, so, on our report, we're gonna, we're gonna do a dunk tank, actually, the high school and us are gonna do a dunk tank separate days. If you wanna come, you both can watch some teachers get dunked.
Principals?
Principals probably do this.
I'll be in both.
I'm gonna try something new this year. I'm gonna try Periscope, it's called, and it's a new app out there that intertwines with Twitter, where it's a live streaming that anybody who subscribes to my Twitter account will get an, an update, that as long as you have Periscope app downloaded, you can just watch it live, just watching it, so. I think it's pretty neat. I'm gonna try it out. It'd kind of be my first live, you know, video, but it should be fun of watching the kids try and throw dunks and people, so. You know, the other thing that I really wanna point out is, our PTO approved last Thursday to purchase the rest of the clocks, the elementary. You know, so we'll have, they'll have purchased seventy-five clocks for us, all atomic clocks, all with the CF logo on them. Really looks sharp. I think it, it adds that, that element to the elementary. A sense of pride, too, with just having all the- I think it, it adds that, that element, um, to the elementary, uh, sense of pride to with just having all of those clocks. And it'd be nice because we don't run on bells, so hopefully be more efficient with our transitions, which obviously, uh, hopefully will translate into more learning time. So other than that, you can read the rest and then.
Thank you to the P T O. Okay. Mike?
I would love to. Uh, we are nearing the end of our, um, assessment window for Cannon Falls area schools. Since the last school board meeting, we have administered two A C T exams, uh, and the M C As for third through eleventh grade. It's safe to say at this point that we are done with our M C As, that we're all, um, finished. Every student in Cannon Falls, uh, took their M C A test, which is nice to say that that's just completed, which just then opened the next round of assessments, which is our local assessments called the STAR and Ames Web. So we're currently doing those for grades two through ten. And then I want to do just a quick backtrack for technology. The twenty-seventh of May will be the Dell Venue Collection, so for any of you who have, um, students that are in the sixth and ninth grade, uh, who will be collecting the Dell venues on Wednesday, the twenty-seventh, and then the twenty-eighth, which is Thursday, the elementary will be collecting the iPads. And then I just want to put that date out there so parents have it on their calendars to not forget them that day.
Or Mike comes to your home.
That's it?
I think so.
All right, thank you. Jake?
Yeah, I got a couple things. We had our Hall of Fame and Senior Athlete Bank run on May third, went really, really well. Had lots of positive comments about that. The, uh, Matt Delk was our male senior athlete of the year and our very own Asha Sarris was the female senior athlete of the year. We inducted six individuals and, um, one team into the Hall of Fame, so we'll, we'll honor them. They each got a plaque and we'll hang out plaques down by the gym as well. So that's all here, we just got to get that done, hopefully over the summer. Tomorrow I'll serve on the State High School League Dance Team Rules Committee. Believe it or not, a lot of the proposals are about choreography plagiarism. Not coaches, judges of the State High School League have also made proposals, I've had a chance to look at them and I'll go over and make recommendations and, yeah, a lot of it is about choreography, believe it or not. Baseball, the season is done, they're seeding tonight. We should find out probably in the next hour what their seed will be. They should get a home game, it'll be Friday, or Thursday at five o'clock. Sorry, that's all right. Softball, uh, played tonight, they got the seven seed. Um, they had a tough draw, they play Zabrow, Zabrow was the number two team in the state, also got the number two seed in the subsection, thanks to Cassie Manero. They got beat five-nothing. Track sections are tomorrow in Byron. Golf wraps up next week, uh, as well as, uh, Goodie County Gophers, which is our adaptive bowling team, you guys approved earlier this year. We had one student participate on that team with, um, a couple other consolidated school districts and, um, they had their state tournament last weekend and our student did participate as well, so. Uh, community ed, we got sixty kids so far signed up for preschool, uh, which is a good number for right now. We'll take kids all the way up to, um, the start of the school year, should get up to about the ninety, ninety students, or anything, something like that. Our summer camp of kids is just bursting at the seams. We've actually had to cut off registration at a couple age groups, um, usually in our, in our youngest age groups, um, because we've gotten full-up program. They do a great job down there. We've got tons of kids down there and staff does a great job. Lastly, working on getting the Special Olympics here. We hosted the Special Olympics here two years ago. I've been in contact with that guy today. Looking like they're going to come back next February, so be a good thing to host here.
All right, thank you. Matt, what do you have for us?
So at first I'd like to give some credit where it's due. I'd like to congratulate the students on the yearbook staff after a long year's work of taking pictures, writing articles, um, I mean, this looks great. Uh, the, the theme they chose this year was that time when, remember the time. And it turned out great, so I just want to pass this around if you want to take a quick look. This Wednesday at seven P M. in the auditorium, the academic awards will be held. Community individuals and organizations come together and give out close to sixty, uh, sixty thousand, uh, in scholarship money to members of the graduating class of two thousand and fifteen. Like, um, as he said, it's like great to see community members just pulling together at this ceremony with money and, you know.
It's usually packed homes too.
Yeah. Students, uh, receive invitations by mail. Other awards are also given to high school students, some of them not, in the senior class, such as the award for maintaining an average GPA of three point three-three or above, plus some, uh, department awards as well. There will be no school next Monday for Memorial Day, so into the end of the school year. There are several concerts coming up. On the twenty-seventh, there is a high school band concert. And then on the first of June, there is a final high school band concert. Both concerts are at seven P M. in the auditorium.
Okay, thank you, Matt. Upcoming, our next board meeting is then six-twenty-two. And again, we'll meet at, uh, five P M. to have discussion with UNESCO. Other things on here, head coach's approval, John Burge Park agreement approval.
You're going to, I think C E is not going to be the digital learning, if that's okay? It's going, we're going to move that to July. Senator Schmidt is coming instead, um, for the presentation on, in June twenty-second. He'd like to do a recap.
Sure. You see the rest of the items on there? For some reason you'd like to add something or have something in question on here? You can talk to Laurie or Beth and we'll get it on. Okay, at this time it looks like it's time to adjourn. May I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Kurt?
I'll second.
Seconded by Brenda. And other discussion? All in favor of adjourn, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are finished.